Welcome everyone to the special meeting of the Blue Lake City Council on Tuesday, October 8th, 2024. I've called this meeting to order and we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invincible with liberty and justice for all.
Would you establish a quorum of the council, please?
Mayor Joe.
Here.
Eric person be all.
Present.
Council members, bummies.
Present.
Present.
All are present. We're on item three, approval of the agenda. I do have a suggestion that since we have some correspondence concerning item six, that we could move item seven above item six and I could read the correspondence that came in, if it's the council's pleasure.
I don't have an agenda. Screen, there you go. Is this all correspondence? This is packed.
Yes, and then there's a letter that was in our packet.
Came in today too.
Right, and then there was one that was in our packet as well, which I'm prepared to read, but I think most of the correspondence has to do with item six. So if we move seven above six and that would mean that we would read the correspondence before the decision of who we choose as our councilperson.
I agree with that.
Yeah, I don't have an issue with that at all.
And is there any other changes that the council would like to see before we move to public? I'd open up to public, any changes that the public would like to see to our agenda? Lori Ponte.
Hi, my name is Lori Ponte and I'm not sure if your correspondence has anything to do with the petitions, but I know in public correspondence, submission of petitions is where this should happen. So I also don't know if each council member that was sent an email with this petition, if you received them. So I have a copy for each one of you and I'd like to give votes to you. I did it because I know where you sit.
Yeah, this one's received.
Okay.
That's why it's in our packet. Yep, thank you.
Well, I'm sure you had it. And then I would also like to make sure that the city, Annalee gets a copy of it, to the original.
Our city clerk.
I know you're going to have to have the copy of the email. And I, Nandi, you also received that, so I'm not sure if you had time to look at it, but I know. Yeah, so you were included in that. So the purpose of the petition is in support of John Swatzky.
Excuse me, but we are on item three, which is approval of agenda.
I thought you moved to public comment.
No, no, we're at approval of agenda.
Sorry, I overshot it. I'll be back.
We'll be, oh, wait a second.
All right. All right, is there any other public comment concerning the approval of our agenda for the evening? See anybody on Zoom this evening? So we'll come back to council for the vote. Now we need to make the vote that we will move item seven above item six. So moved?
Second.
Motion to approve the agenda with item seven, council correspondence coming before item six, city council vacancy. Any further discussion? All of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It passes. We have an agenda. Public comment. The public is invited to present petitions, make announcements, or provide other information to the city council that is relevant to the scope of authority of the city of Blue Lake that is not on the agenda. The council may provide up to 15 minutes for the public input session. To assure that each individual presentation is heard, the council may uniformly impose time limitations of three minutes to each individual presentation. The public will be given the opportunity to address items that are on the agenda at the time the agenda item is taken up. Is there anyone here for public comment that's not on the agenda? It's not on the agenda.
But it's a petition.
It's on the agenda.
But that's on the agenda.
It's corresponded.
It's under correspondence.
Oh, I didn't realize that. No, not everyone responds.
We all did.
We all got it.
We all did.
Me too.
Yeah, I was in another meeting, so.
Is there anyone else that would like to make a public comment on an item that is not on the agenda for the evening? Okay, we'll move on then to public hearing. We have a closeout of our Community Development Block Grant Library Improvement Project. And the city has completed the library improvement project and is processing the closeout of the grant. The city was funded through the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG program, to remove accessibility barriers at the library, including installation of an ADA accessible walkway, improvements to the library bathroom, and access improvements for the library entrance. Work was completed within the budget and established by the CDBG Community Development Block Grant allocation. The city has rejected the initial installation of the handrail due to a defective weld. This handrail is being refabricated and is being installed as a final punch list item. Would you like to add anything to the report, Andy?
No, it's a pretty straightforward project. This was some of the funding that the city has had for a number of years. The only project that we qualified for, to use the funding for, was the library project because we fell under the demographics of the county, because it's a county library. So it was a great opportunity to make some improvements. We have some new ADA parking out in front of the library space. The improvements for accessibility were very much needed for the library. We also got some of our siding replaced on City Hall, a new window installed. And so it was just a really good overall project that we didn't have funding for through our own resources. So being able to utilize this funding really brought a lot of value and allows us to keep the library functioning because the county is required to maintain accessibility standards as well. And this was a project that was mandated under their consent decree. So we're pretty happy with the project. Obviously, we had a couple of welds on the railing that we rejected after installation. So that's being addressed and refabricated and will be reinstalled probably within the next week or two. But other than that, the project went really well and was pretty straightforward. We had a few little hiccups along the way. ADA accessibility is really tough. You're talking, you know, tenths of an inch for grades. And so we had to, the contractor had to tear out a couple of things. The engineers had to re-engineer on their own dime a couple of items that had some accessibility changes between the time we were funded and the time we went out to bid. So there were a few little bumps, but mostly the project was very successful and we're happy to close it out and be able to look at working with CDBG in the future for additional projects.
I understand there's supposed to be a mural put along the side of the ramp. Has that been organized through the city and is the school involved in that?
Yeah, so we are working with Molly and the Resource Center and the library and the school to do a mural. It's kind of a blank space, so we asked the contractor to just put kind of a primer coat on it. And Molly and her team have been working with Kim and her library crew to do some outreach. And I think we've received a little bit of feedback, so I think Molly and the library team will be meeting soon to come up and finalize a design. And so it'll be nice to have, you know, a little bit of pop of color and another little mural out there. We are thinking maybe focusing on healthy foods and literacy because both are things that are really important to the community and both items that are very much a part of each program's focal points. So it's kind of an easier kind of imagery maybe to be able to paint on a small surface. So that's kind of how the thoughts are going on that.
I know the librarian really wants her planter back in some form, but she's waiting for what's happening with the mural to see how it's all going to work together, so.
Yeah, it's a mural and we've got a lot of construction right here, so we don't really want to put anything out in that space right now until we know that we can control traffic and we don't have so much interference with bigger trucks and equipment, so.
Good idea. Okay, any other questions from council concerning this? All right, I'm going to open the public hearing on this item. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment on this project? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. And it looks like our action is basically to open and close the public hearing and then to authorize the manager to certify that the work has been completed according to the funds. So moved.
I'll second.
Motion made by Angela Schall, seconded by Elise Scifani, to authorize the city manager to undertake the grantee with funds provided under CDBG award contract. Is that all you need in the?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. All right, any further discussion from council? All of us in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? It passes unanimously. Okay, item seven is council correspondence. And going to begin with something we received in our packets. And this correspondence is from Elizabeth McKay, former councilperson. Please include this letter in the packet on your October 8th meeting. Thank you. Dear Blue Lake City Council, I'm writing in favor of appointing Chris Fire to city council. He lives and works in Blue Lake, understands our community, and will be an asset to the city council. Chris is an active member of the Blue Lake community, both as a professional in his work and as a volunteer. His works to the Blue Lake Resource Center, oh, he works for the Blue Lake Resource Center through Providence, providing counseling services, helping with food security and general support services. He is a generous and thoughtful person and well-respected by his community in this work. Chris is also a regular volunteer for the Mad River Grange and serves at the monthly pancake breakfast, is a member of the Blue Lake Chamber and the Folklife Society, and he has also recently been appointed as a commissioner to the Blue Lake Parks and Recreation Commission. Chris has a friendly attitude towards others, is inclusive and respectful, and obviously enjoys being involved in community. If appointed to council, Chris will also represent Blue Lake in this additional role and duties. His helpful attitude and demeanor towards others will create a positive impression towards Blue Lake for the other representatives from other cities. As a neighbor, Chris is kind and respectful, occasionally leaves a loaf of fresh bread on our porch, keeps a clean yard and is happy. I often hear laughter when I am in my backyard, which is a delightful sound. I hope that you seriously consider appointing Chris Fire to the council because he is a kind and respectful person who is invested in Blue Lake and will work to help Blue Lake continue to be a lovely place to work and live. Please let me know if you have any questions or need further information regarding Chris Fire. Best regards, Elizabeth McKay, former council member.
There's two chairs up front if you guys want to come in.
And the next. The next letter is from Martin Aragonas. I'm not sure how that's the name there. I wanted to write a letter to thank the Resource Center for all that they do for the community. I wanted to thank Chris Fire for his work with the Community Food Program. As a resident of Blue Lake, that utilizes the food program. I want to say that it's an important service and program, and Chris does a really good job and makes everyone feel welcome. I think Chris Fire will do a good job on the city council, and I hope that he will be appointed. He knows the community and our needs and is always willing to help where he can. He will be a voice for all of us. Thank you. Next one, Tina Catalina Corcoran. Dear council members, it is my deep pleasure and duty to recommend the amazing Chris Fire for the open seat on the city council. I met Chris at the Blue Lake Community Center where I have been a volunteer since 2017. I have watched him learn and grow and excel in all resource activities, food distribution chief, special events and workshops coordinator, Friday Morning Social Club moderator, host, and more. He brings energy and enthusiasm, passion and compassion to everyone he meets. He welcomes all of us who enter the center with love and joy. Chris is a gift. He listens, he cares, and he immediately delivers what is needed. His leadership qualities are outstanding. He is the most qualified and best-prepared candidate to jump into the council position. We need him. Please appoint. He will not disappoint. Okay, this one is from Jennifer Kramer. Dear city of Blue Lake, we live on the county side of Blue Lake Boulevard, but we are interested and involved in city politics. We would like to suggest the current council vacancy be filled by Chris Fire. He is an excellent listener, level-headed, and concerned about the future of the city. We think he would offer a fresh perspective, and he would be unbiased and civil. Please choose Chris Fire for this position. Thanks. Harry and Jennifer Kramer. Alyssa Rosado, Blue Lake, California, re-Chris Fire, Blue Lake City Council appointment. Two Blue Lake City Council members. I wanted to take a quick moment of your time to voice my recommendation that the city council appoint Chris Fire to the open council seat. Chris will be an outstanding addition. His previous work with the community, including hosting senior lunch talks, work with youth recreation, speaks to his dedication to the place we live. He is a thoughtful person with a balanced approach in his thinking. I believe he has the best interests of our small community in mind and wholeheartedly approve of his inclusion to our city leadership. Thank you for your time and consideration, Alyssa Rosado. Bettina Iper, subject for appointment of Christopher Guy Fire. Dear council members, I have served as the Pla- the Blue Lake Parks and Recreation Commission for over a decade. I've served on the Blue Lake Parks Recreation Commission for over a decade. Chris is a community-minded individual whom I have found to be a rational thinker, level-headed, and fair. These are traits I believe will serve the city well if he is appointed to the city council, and the reasons why I am recommending that the city appoint Chris to the vacant seat on the Blue Lake City Council. From David Ponte. Dear council members, the following seven pages of 62 signatures of both voting residents and those not able to cast a vote living just outside city limits are in support of the appointment of John Swatzky on October 8th, 2024, to fill the recent vacancy on the Blue Lake City Council. John is best qualified from the fine candidates who have stepped forward to serve the remaining two-year vacant position. His past experience on the council would assure that after the coming election, there would be at least two sitting council members with council experience to work with potentially three new members. I respectfully submit these signatures. Lori Ponte. And I'm not going to read every name on the signatures, of the signatures.
Well, we've read all those other letters. I think that perhaps we should note the names on here.
Well, I mean mainly my problem is I'm not very good with names, but I will go Robert Russo, Janice Russo, Ryan Russo, Alicia Russo, Jim Long, Brooks Franklin, Camille Franklin, April Frazier, Kyle Frazier, Locka Joe Patterson, Ev Drakenleys, Anna Brown, Fred Jacobson, Margaret Ashram, Scott Frazier, James Kinney, Aaron Ponte, David Thomas, Maggie McKenzie, Trudy Frazier, Bob Westhaven, I'm thinking that's Westhaven, Sarah Patterson, Merrill Lindgren, Jennifer Coors, Brian Coors, Ron Sharp, Barbara Browning, Jen Costa, Rebecca Thornton, Raymond Regosa, Jean Susan Lynch, Patrick Lynch, Angela Dare, Robert Dare, Jill Harnden, Jeff Harnden, thank you, Lorraine Ponte, James Brown, David Ponte. Oh, Melissa Costa, okay. Randall Johnson, Erin McClure, Judy McClure, Dorothy C. Johnson, Carl B. Jensen, Teddy Jensen, Kyle, I think it's Kyle Jensen, Brandy Jensen, Sarah Dubovian, Martha Granger, Carleen Sutherland, Charles Sutherland, Chad Frizzell, Donna Acosta, Lois Anderson, Erin Frostland, Frostland, thank you, Linda Prince, Garrett O'Hurst, Sandra Bennett, Peter Daggett, Pamela Nevett, Jeff Langdon, Lisa Hoover. And then there's just, we support for Chris. Okay, and then a note from Holly Hutchinson from 440 Hartman Street, Blue Lake. We support for Chris Fire for city council. Okay, I think that's all of the correspondence.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any other correspondence this evening? Okay, thank you. Great, we'll move on then to item six. City council vacancy, discuss, consider, and possibly appoint qualified applicant to fill city council seat vacated on July 24th, 2024. Discussion in action. On July 24th, 2024, the city council received a formal resignation letter from council member Elizabeth McKay. City legal counsel prepared a memo outlining the options and process for filling the vacancy, and the council-directed staff advertised the vacancy with an application submission closing date of September 27th, 2024. Council directed staff to bring completed applications to the city council's special meeting on October 8th, 2024, for review, discussion, and public action. The city received four applications for the city council positions, all of which are included as part of this agenda report. Okay, so typically what we have done for this is we have asked each applicant to come to the podium and make a small presentation if they'd like to, and then the council will ask you some questions. And these have to be appropriate, so they can't be in any way biased anyway. And then we will make a decision. So in order of what I have got here, Chris Fire, would you please come up first? Thank you. That'll be later. Before we do, oh, well, typically we don't do, we don't do public comment on correspondence, but I guess we can.
Sorry, I meant to be there in swimless, so it's okay. I'd like to make a personal correspondence regarding one of the council appointments.
Okay, would you identify yourself, please? That's Erica.
My name is Eric Paul.
Okay. Go ahead.
I'm saying I'm here doing more script fire. It's a networking thing for about two years ago, and it didn't be working event for about as a member of the county. This guy, I'm just saying, when I first ran for a council position on Parks and Recs, at three years into the city, I was considered a new guy in town, and everyone didn't really give me a whole lot of support, but I still got.
And I'm just advocating for Chris because I've been the new guy in town and I've known people have been like, well, he hasn't lived here long enough to be on council, and I think that's just flat out wrong. This guy's got a lot of heart. He has driven for this community and he will do more than make Blue Lake okay. He's going to make Blue Lake an amazing place to live. And I fully support Chris as a colleague, as a friend, and now as a neighbor. So I put 100% behind him. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there any other public comment on correspondence? All right, where were we? Let's move on. We were on city council vacancy. All right, let's start with Chris Fire. Let's go.
All right, thank you again.
If you would like to make a public comment at this time, in addition to your application, this would be the time for you to do that.
Just really grateful to be here. I'm really grateful for consideration and I'm really grateful for all the great correspondence. Warms my heart more than you could ever know. I've, you know, I've been in public service about 10 years. I've been in Blue Lake public service for three years. Did move here in January. I fought to work, live here earlier, but it's hard to get here. But I'm myself very blessed to be here. I work here at the Blue Lake Community Resource Center, as you were saying, and I just feel like this is a great opportunity for me to continue to do service for Blue Lake, Blue Lake citizens.
I'm going to ask each council applicant the same thing now, so you'll know what it's going to be because you'll hear it this first time. But my question is, what is your vision for the city of Blue Lake?
First and foremost, we need to build consensus. We need to bridge these divides that may not be apparent. But so I look forward to being a consistent candidate and I want, of course, I want Blue Lake to grow. I want it that we need, you know, in every which way, and I'd love to be a part of that. And I'm not a great public speaker, my apologies, but I look forward to just making Blue Lake grow in many regards. You know, we need more population, we need more businesses, we need taxing revenue. We need development, but we need to do it smart and we need to do it as a community, just like we're doing now. And so I'm blessed to be here and I'm grateful for this opportunity.
Council persons? Okey dokey.
Thank you, Tina.
Council persons, did you have any questions? I'll go around. Christopher, did you have a question?
Yeah. When you, if you get appointed, what will be one of the projects you would want to bring forward?
Disc golf course. You know, we just lost some holes up there, the 18-hole course up in Arcata, so we no longer have an 18-hole course in Hummel County, which is odd. And, you know, I come from Parks and Recs, so that's, of course, where I'm going to be straight up. You know, that's where my expertise is so far with Blue Lake. But yeah, and just continuing to serve this community, you know, in every which way that I can.
Elise, would you like to ask something?
Do you want to just record?
So, no, if I want to get not behind the person in the podium, we can maybe bring out a few more chairs so the people that want to hear can get in the room and hear what's being said. Does anybody want to do that? Anyway, I guess one of my questions would be, what have you done to date to kind of bring yourself up to speed on some of the main issues in town? You know, there's been a lot of conversations about the Powers Creek District being, becoming a changing environment, host to low-income housing developments, possibly an RV park. I'd like to know how you've gone about educating yourself as about the current, some of the current issues in town and the current projects that, you know, may maybe hap- may, uh, maybe happening in the next few years.
Well, first of all, thanks to Justin, we have these recordings, and so I'm able to, I do listen to every one of the, uh, City Council meetings. Uh, you know, of course, with Parks and Recs, you help us with that, of course. As personal opinions, I'm not really sure if I have any personal opinions. I look forward to working with my constituents and trying to find consensus between all of us. Right out of the gate, I, you know, of course, I want more population, I want more tax revenue. But, um, I need to see it a little closer, like you guys get to see it. I mean, I just get to hear it on a City Council, uh, on YouTube, if you will, so. You know, I look forward to giving a hundred percent, looking into all of these different projects, but, uh, you know, I talk with the community. Uh, I hear things, you know, when people talk, of course, and, uh, I look forward to hearing all these vantage points and opinions.
Angela?
So part of, uh, City Council duties is to sit on, uh, some local, but some county-wide commissions. Uh, and so for, for those county-wide commissions especially, how do you think that you can best represent Blue Lake? To ensure that you are the voice of the city and then bringing the county information back to the constituents?
Yeah, uh, there's no bigger booster for Blue Lake than myself. I, you know, profess it on a daily basis. Blessed to be working here, blessed to be living here. Uh, I know how special this place is. Uh, I appreciate where they live and where their constituents are, but I'm going to be Blue Lake first and Blue Lake first always. That's just, uh, first and foremost. So I look forward to, uh, boosting Blue Lake.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council persons? Okay, thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Adeline.
All right, we'll move on to Verda Winona Pitts.
Um, so I am running for City Council. Ideally, I would like to sit on council. I really support that, um, eighty-two people who signed for John. I think he's very qualified. I think, um, I mean, he's had two years on council. I would reiterate what was stated about the upcoming changes, allowing somebody that has that experience to be here in the case that we end up losing certain individuals, um, so that we're not an entirely fresh city council. Yeah, I'm ready for questions.
Okay, you get my question first. What is your vision for the city of Blue Lake?
I'll echo, I see the future is happening in front of our eyes. There's no denying that. I also agree that revenue, population growth, development, all of these things are undeniable um, aspects of our future. I want to facilitate community involvement and say, and opinions being heard and met. The Powers Creek District page on the website is very beneficial. It has a lot of the documents that will lay out a lot of the foundation of the projects that are being presented and give you kind of black and white information. I would recommend reading those. I, I personally have certain products, projects that I'm not as excited about that are being presented to the city right now. And I have a lot of, um, also, you know, I think ideas and things that I've heard from community members, the ways to incorporate different facets of what the community wants, as well as what's being presented. Um, maybe things on a smaller scale, you know, I, again, don't want to deny revenue to the city, but I think that some of the plans for, um, Power Creek District are a little bit grandiose for our little town. And so, yeah, I think we're not going to stop progress. We're not going to stop the future from coming to us, but we can mitigate certain things.
Christopher?
Question, if you're, um, I'm not elected, but appointed, what kind of projects or what would be one of your main goals coming in?
Well, uh, that's two questions. I mean, goals is to facilitate community involvement and have the community represented in meetings and heard and not just kind of dismissed, which is what I feel happens a lot of the time now. And as far as projects, um, just being that, you know, helping to facilitate that relationship between all the projects that are happening or going to happen, potentially going to happen, and, um, and the community, and just finding that balance of what works. What's going to still make us feel like we live in the community we all love right now, and also is going to be uh, helping to fill the needs that the city, you know, quote unquote, needs so badly. Because we all live here now, and we love it here now because it's what it is, and we don't want it to change a lot, so. Well, some, some of us, anyway.
Elise?
I guess I'll ask you a similar question. Um, I know I've seen you at many, many meetings over the last couple of years, um, and even before that. And, um, and I'd like to know, um, what you've done to date to educate yourself about what's going on in the city in terms of, proposed projects, ongoing projects, um, other history, um, things like that.
Okay, well, I'm a history buff, so I've read like all of the old Blue Lake newspapers from like hundred years, and that is a good foundation, and I'm cross-referencing like old news articles and documents and the city website, which, again, the Blue Lake Powers District thing, you know, I've, I, I had on my cell phone, I think, about four hundred and eighty documents related to county, uh, and city. And, um, all of the random things, I would literally just spend hours searching on Google, Blue Lake Grant, Blue Lake uh, water treatment, Blue Lake Levy, and just finding whatever I can and reading it. And I think if you don't have that kind of weird obsession about it, then the job's not for you, because you have to just like submerge and immerse yourself in information about the city to understand it, because there is so much. And I'm not saying I understand everything even close, but I have a strong, strong desire to educate myself about it and learn, and, uh, so, yeah, just reading so much. Reading so much. I'm coming to meetings. Thank you.
Angela?
All right, same question. Um, so, again, you know, at commission meetings, particularly, particularly county commission meetings, how can you best represent Blue Lake at those meetings to ensure that you are the voice of Blue Lake and bring relevant information back to the constituents?
Uh, I actually think that's an exciting opportunity to think about getting to sit on a different, um, board and represent Blue Lake. I think that's one of the aspects I like about the position of being on council. Just because you're getting to learn something so different from what wouldn't necessarily be like the norm here. As far as representing the city, um, I think just by being conscientious of speaking factually and, um, uh, you know, objectively and, um, supporting of the city, but also I am an individual and, uh, and I will honor that as well. But, yeah, I, I think just the better that we're all doing up here and in here, the better it's going to be for any one of us when we're not up here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next applicant, Pat Napier.
This morning, five o'clock your time, I was in Virginia. And, uh, luckily, the fog was just, just at bay, and we were able to land here, so it's been good travels back and forth. Public comment, we want to say. I'll say this, as far as how I look at this appointment. One of the first things is, oh, boy, two years sounds better than four. And the reason I say that is there's a learning curve with it. It's a challenge, and anyone up here, whether we agree with them or not, they're putting in the time, they're taking a lot of heat. We might not agree. They probably can't go to a public event without being hassled. And these are, these are all things that, whether we like the individual or not, we got to respect what they're putting into that. So, that's kind of the first thing, and, and I truly mean that. The second is, and I think I kind of want to bring an elephant out of the room. In this election, it feels like it's become a referendum on our city manager. I don't think that is fair. I think that if you disagree with what our city manager has done, you would have to look at the council. Because it's up to the council to put up guardrails. It's up to the council to educate the folks out there. It's up to the council to bring consensus, consensus. And it shouldn't fall on one individual, uh, to be, to have blame pointed at them, so. Um, I, I know there, people ask, I mean, that's, this is what I wanted to bring out, the elephant in the room. How do you feel about Mandy? The first thing I say is I'll respond with our city manager. You won't get more bang for the buck. She works her tail off. She gets a lot done. If you don't like what she's doing, you got to get your council involved. You got to ask your council to develop policy to help guide, not to brutalize, to help guide. And that's the difference. So, I guess that's part of my, uh, public comment there. The other is, I think I'm going to be a three-parter if I can keep my brain on straight. The other is, it's, it's unfortunate that we're at an appointment level. Um, in rereading the article about when, uh, former councilperson Elizabeth McKay resigned, she actually had been thinking about it for several months, and so had it happened earlier, this all could have been on the ballot, and then we could truly hear the voices of all of the citizens in Blue Lake. Putting that aside, uh, I have to say, I, I would love to say I am the best choice, pump my fist and, and show you all my qualifications, but I'm going to tell you, I, I have a lot of faith in John Swatzky. And I think Blue Lake, uh, and no offense, John, I love your enthusiasm, and I know you bring joy in what you do. And I know that you will apply yourself and learn. And, and where's Nona? Where'd you go? There, hi. Um, how many generations here in Blue Lake, and you're also doing the homework. I mean, I think you're right there, too. We also have someone who's functioned within council before and has proven himself in that capacity. So, um, you know, if I were to do my ranking, that's kind of what I'm, I'm getting at. What was the third thing? Anybody know? Uh, maybe it'll come back to me, maybe it won't. Um, let's dig in. Thank you.
All right, your first question, what is your vision for the city of Blue Lake?
It's pretty sexy. It's called revenue streams. And, uh, you know, as we look at, the state of California is already having a difficult time with its budget, and that means that Humboldt County is having a difficult, difficult time with its budget. And that trickles down to us. We're going to have a difficult time with our budget. This is all across the board. There's not going to be a lot to bail us out. Um, I have been in situations like this, not in the city council, but where I've been faced with, uh, a lot of jobs on the line, a lot of need that's there, and not a lot of resources to address it. Uh, I find that sometimes we can reach out to other partners, uh, local banks, sometimes working with the, uh, I think it's the, uh, I'm so sorry, I cannot recall it right now. Working with banks on loans, uh, to be able to help fund our own projects rather than going out to contractors to do so, maybe that is something that we could do here in Blue Lake. Um, as many of you guys have said already, we know that change is already upon us. And it breaks my heart to see anybody beg for a place to live, to beg for a place for their pet, to beg to be able to have food on their table, and change like that begins at home, right here in Blue Lake, for our neighbors, and our neighbors are all people in Humboldt County. So my vision is for these revenue streams, let's see where we could develop it. Could we look at possibly parking for all of these great events that we host? And we maybe capture some of that revenue directly, small ways. I'm sorry, my pen ran out. I couldn't get the rest on there. Um, also, I think everyone in this room has this sense, we want to unify. Whatever this division has been, and whatever the disconnect and the disenfranchisement of the people in Blue Lake, it, it's really time to stop that and to reach out. Let's find our common ground. This all sounds like political doublespeak. I guarantee you it's not. It's one of the first things that we need to do, is heal ourselves, heal each other. Start from there. Let's hit another one there.
Christopher?
If appointed, what project would you want to bring up first?
This sounds like a pass. I want to reach out to Blue Lake. I want to hear from them what their priority, what their priority is. When I was campaigning, what little campaigning I've been able to do at this point, and when I was collecting signatures, my question was not, hey, this is what I'm going to do for you. I'm listening. That's my actual first project, is listening. It was really enriching to be out there collecting signatures and to hear people say, my house is flooding and I can't get a response or a resolution. Or, or for someone else to say, I can't afford housing. I love Blue Lake. I can't live here, but this is my home. You know, that is actually my first project, is to listen. I kind of, in my first project, to develop my skills, my knowledge here in Blue Lake. Um, I don't have a particular vision to thrust upon Blue Lake. I truly want to hear from those who have been here for many years and those who are just starting out here, and see if I can't find common elements in that and bring that forward to the council.
Elise?
So what have you done up to date to educate yourself, um, about what's going on in Blue Lake? The projects that are on the boards, the projects that might be coming forward? You could let us know.
Uh, that's a great question, because, uh, I'm not going to be glib on that, and there is so much to learn, so very much to learn, and these are complicated issues. Um, I am a dedicated researcher. Even if I'm just trying to buy like maybe, uh, headlights for my car, I'll spend thirty hours of research to find just the right headlights. The same way with this, the stakes are really high, and it's foolish for me to go forward without educating myself on those. So, and I think that we have some really good resources right here in the room, you know, from Adeline and your many years here in the council. I think Mandy and your heart and soul that you've put into this town, and I think many of the audience, audience members here, again, that's where, um, that's where so much information can come. So, and in addition, I've also have become, uh, out of my shell as an introvert. I've actually left the house and have gone to the Grange. Um, I've become a member of the Grange, um, going to be joining the CERT team again now that COVID has passed. And then just beginning to really go through some of the past documentations, because where we are today isn't just this one moment in time. We have had people, not just over the past years, but the past decades, doing a lot of hard work and research and bringing ideas forward to Blue Lake. And, and I want to reach back into that history and bring that forward too, and see how can we weave that together with what we're faced with today.
Thank you.
Yeah, Angela?
I feel like I'm interviewing teachers again. All right, uh, so same questions, uh, again, county commission meetings. How will you represent Blue Lake at those meetings, ensuring that you are the voice of the city, and then bringing pertinent information back to the constituents?
Uh, I think that's kind of a team effort. I would work first with the council, other council members, to be sure that we're in a consensus. It's not a matter of it being my opinion. It's about being the opinion of Blue Lake. Um, I would also be happy to work with the city manager and see what their concerns are with this, and see if I can also incorporate that. Blue Lake needs to be a team effort, and that's what I'd like to do. So that's how I would approach it with, uh, outside commissions. I hope that answers your questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Kat.
All right, can't wait to get a shower.
John Swatzky?
Well, it's going to be really hard to follow that one up. I just want to say, we have some great candidates. Um, we've had a lot of community support for all of the, um, candidates for this position. I feel that I'm looking forward to, if selected, um, collaborating with the current, um, council and seeing what we can accomplish together. I look forward to helping repair, um, the community if it is fractured. And listening to everyone in the community as well. I think that's really important. The key is really to listen to everyone and get input from everyone, no matter, um, no matter what. And those are my key goals.
All right, here's your question. What is your vision for the city of Blue Lake?
My vision for the city of Blue Lake is to be able to live and work here, make a decent wage, have a, um, a popular, uh, thriving community that is supportive and works well together. I really miss, um, some of the community events from about ten years ago. It seemed like we had a lot of, um, thriving, um, um, markets and, and gardens and things like that, and I like to see those come back. I, I think the spirit is still here, but I think it just needs some revitalization. I, I think the spirit is still here, but I think it just needs some revitalization.
Christopher?
I think I know the answer to this, but what projects or project do you want to bring forth F appointed?
Well, I'd like to say the skating rink. Can you, because I spend quite a bit of time there. No, I, I think, I think the Powers Creek district is something I'd really be looking forward to working with. I think that, um, economics right now are the main concern for the city. And that would, that would be where I'd be spending the majority of my, uh, time looking at how we can increase revenue for the city. Because that's our, our number one issue right now.
Elise?
So, um, granted, you've been on the council before, um, but there's been a hiatus. So I'm wondering what you've done in, uh, recent months or years to bring yourself up to speed and to be, um, and educate yourself about what's currently going on?
I've been, um, reviewing the last 10 to 15 years of minutes. I think there's 10 years, but, um, I could be wrong on that. I've been reviewing those, seeing, um, what's changed, what hasn't, there hasn't been a lot of change. I've been, um, going through the current minutes and agenda items. I've been attending meetings as well. I've been reaching out to the community and speaking with them one-on-one to find out what their concerns are and what they'd like to see the, what their, what their vision for the community is.
Angela?
So again, um, at those county commission meetings, how will you represent, um, Blue Lake? And I'm going to go back to my question here. Oh, ensure that you are the voice for the city and then bring that information back to the constituents.
I think to represent the city, it's best to just be myself. Those arenas are a different, um, setting than we have in our council here. You're dealing with different people. The dynamics are significantly different. But it's all about collaboration. And I think that's the main goal is collaborating with the other, uh, cities. And, um, I think my experience would go far because I can hit the ground running.
Thank you. So just to clarify what's happening here, it's confusing to some, I know. But these four folks are also on our ballot. And so what would happen is if one of these folks are, obviously one of them is going to be chosen this evening, they'll still show up on the ballot. If they win their election in, on November 5th, then they, then that supersedes being appointed at this two-year, uh, term. So then we would have to then have another opening like this. In probably December 12th is usually the time when elections are certified. Anyway, it, it's, it's very interesting. It's an interesting situation that we have right now. But we will see how it works out. Okay, um, council members, we have had four good cap applicants this evening. What is the pleasure of the council this evening?
I, um, have looked at all of these and I appreciate hearing from everybody tonight. I think we have a lot of, a lot of different concerns that we need to address. And I, I like the, uh, the breadth of knowledge and perspective that, that the candidates have brought in here tonight. I do have a concern, um, that goes along with something that Lori Ponte mentioned, which is that, um, potentially I'll be the only council member going forward after December that's currently sitting here. And that makes me a little nervous. And so I think, um, I think selecting somebody that has that previous council experience to guarantee that there is, previous council experience on the council going forward is, is something we should consider. You know, I know, um, I mean, there are no guarantees. Especially in politics, but, but that, um, that's a concern of mine. And, uh, and I, um, anyway, I just want to bring that forward.
And in two years, all five seats will be up for reelection.
Yep.
No, in two, in two more years, there'd be, um,
In two more years, both two seats are up and then the four-year seats are up. Is that right?
No.
No.
No. Cause both of ours were two-year seats.
That's right. Yeah, so it always alternates. So, yeah, so there would be, um, only two seats vacated in two years.
Yeah.
So that, that's right. So anyway, so, um, for that reason, um, I, I'm leaning towards John Swatzky. And so I would make a motion to appoint John.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I, um, after re, having all these read and, uh, what's going to come up here with the election, and everything that's going on, I think we have multiple people in this room that are going to do great. And I honestly think that if none of us got reelected and everybody in this room got elected, I still think the city would survive and do just fine. Cause everybody has their heart, heart into this. Not one person that is running right now doesn't care about Blue Lake. They, uh, they want to be here and they want to help. They're stepping forward. I would like to make a motion to appoint Chris Fryer to this position.
Well, my concern is that Chris has the least experience in the realm of, um, of government. He has great experience in the realm of community service. But of all of our candidates, he has the least, um, experience in this room and dealing with, with the issues that we're, we have to grapple with and research and fully understand. I, I, I need to take my hat off to the folks that are on the, um, the other folks in the room that have been coming to meetings since they put their names forward. There's just, there's just, and I know, I mean, I think in some ways the whole learning curve issue is just overwhelming. And I know that some folks are already, um, far ahead in, in that education process. So, um, I think that's something we need to think about.
I will second Chris's, Chris Edgar's nomination. So we have a motion and a second on the floor. All right, let's take a vote.
I think Angela has something.
Well, no, what I was going to say is I think, I think that there is a lot of, um, there is a lot of support behind John. And I do believe that that's going to come out in the election. And I don't have any concern about that. There's also a lot of support behind Chris. I do like, I do like, I don't, yeah. I hate this. I did. I was, I was going to talk. I like, I like caregivers. Quite honestly. Caregivers are what speaks to my heart. So I would, I would vote in favor of, of Chris because caregivers speak to my heart.
All right. So what we're doing now, what we're going to do is, excuse me. Okay. Excuse me. We will have a moment for a public comment, but not this. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Motion made by Christopher Edgar, second by me. Any further discussion from council? Now I open it up to the public.
Thank you, thank you. I apologize for interrupting. Uh, clearly, uh, I'm invested in this and emotional in this. I, I don't know how you could deny appointing John. And, and to try to justify that, well, it's clear he's probably going to get elected. That isn't the point. You need an active member now. And you've got someone here who can jump into the game and perform. And I don't know how, and John, I, I, I don't know you that well. I mean, Chris, I'm sorry, Chris, you are lovely. And if I can be honest, I, I, I would consider that you decline or retract your candidacy and it, and, and just let's let the vote settle that. But out of all of us who've come here for appointment, only one has been rightfully elected in the past. Only one has served in the council in the past and only one has done so fairly, objectively, professionally. And I, I know this might be a hard decision. Or you might think that you've made a good decision in your mind. But this has been the problem all along in Blue Lake. The decision is already made before we got here. That is what is hurting us in Blue Lake. So I'm asking again, each of you, Councilperson Scholl, Council, or Mayor Jones, Councilperson Schifani, Councilperson Edgar, and all of you who might be listening or in this room. I think there can only be one choice in this. He's right here. He's served before. He's been in the room before. Thank you. And again, I apologize for interrupting.
Lori Ponte?
Thank you. Um, so 63 people signed a petition in favor and six people said correspondence for Chris. And I, and I think, I think Chris could win in an election, right? So if, as, um, Kat said, we need somebody to hit the ground running with experience for a couple of months until we have a full council that's been elected. I don't know why you wouldn't see that. It, it, it doesn't seem to make any sense to discount a petition of signed residents. Some who can vote in, in, um, or in the sphere of influence and some who are registered voters. It's, it's kind of like slap in the face to everyone that has either come here in support of John Swatzky or has signed a petition and can't be here. So I, I, I don't know how you can sit and just look at those who have. Chris sounds like a very lovely, caring, and as another healthcare professional, I understand. But I think that you guys are in more of a situation that needs some experience. So I would ask you to think about that seriously, quickly, and reconsider. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Jean, Becky, and then Aaron. And then, um, Tina.
Hi, everyone. This is a great meeting. You know, I worked with John. Uh, I was on the council with John. Um, we discussed, um, budget items. Um, I found him to be very conscientious and, um, very easy to approach, very knowledgeable, and steadfast and considerate. One thing that concerns me with what is happening tonight is, um, we're going into a, a place where we're going to be discussing the, um, general plan for the city of Blue Lake. Um, and, and Chris, you're wonderful and I, and thank you for, uh, helping me in helping the community. Uh, John is aware of a lot of the, out of, uh, things within the, the general plan and the planning for the city. Has been in the past, uh, has evaluated it. And I really think it's what's happening is voting with your heart. For the care of people, I know things are going rotten in, in a lot of ways and people are homeless and people are, I was homeless at, at a point. And what I see, uh, the consideration of the community to, to devalue, the, the growth of the city based on, um, the needs of some people that don't have jobs, don't do this or don't do that. When you vote with your heart and you don't, uh, make the, uh, the priority, your thinking and your logic, um, it, it detracts from the growth of the city. Yeah, I really think that it's wonderful to have empathy. It's wonderful to have compassion. But, um, there's a place for that. Compassion, empathy, um, and helping others, uh, has a place. But the growth of the city is based on general plans, budgets, and, and looking at, at finances and solid, uh, happenings, not just, how to give somebody, uh, food. There's a lot more to it than that. And I would like to see John, uh, and that reconsidered, that, um, John has had the experience. He, he can, he can come in and know what he's doing. He is going to have, uh, and poor Elise will be sitting here trying to figure out how to help everybody. John already knows this. So please consider the fact that to vote with logic and not with heart. Thank you.
Becky, were you next?
Yeah. My name's Becky Thornton, Frigosa. And, um, I signed the petition in support of John to be appointed to this position. And I agree with everybody else. It's, you know, he has experience. He knows what he's doing. He's been there. He's seen it. And he can accomplish it. And Chris, you're great. I did sign your petition to get you on ballot. And we thank you for all your service. You are wonderful. But, um, you know, it's just experience. And right now I think we need that over anything else. So, you know, thank you.
Thank you. Erin?
I'm Erin McClure and Chris, begging you to retract yourself. Can't you see what's going on here? I mean, this screams corruption, you guys. Come on. I mean, that's what's the big division in this town already. Obviously, uh, every person in this town, in this building knows that John Swatzky is the best candidate. He's been on the candidate, he's been here before, sitting in these seats before. He comes from a long time family from this town. He knows a lot about what's going on in the town. I haven't seen Chris at one meeting, not one. John Swatzky's been, knows this town inside and out, talks about everything and, and we all know him. This makes you all look very bad. And I'm sorry that they've put you in this position. Thank you.
Tina Catalina?
Uh, I love some people in this room and I'm amazed at some other people. But I love John Swatzky too. He does have name recognition. And he has the best chance of anybody to be the first one on the ballot out, the most votes on the ballot in November. And Chris doesn't have name recognition. Some people don't even know how to pronounce his last name. It is fire. And he is a house of fire. He could jump in tonight regardless of lack of experience at the council. A lot of council members, they climb and they run. Once you go, you go and you get a chance to get voted on, not petitioned. If this were a contest for petitions, I think Chris would have hundreds of people on a petition. And so would, uh, Kate, uh, what's her name? Kat. And so would, uh, Verna, who I don't know, and that other one. Of course, that's what I know. Well, that's my opinion. And I'm not always right, but I know one thing that I do stand for, and I stand for this young man. I've watched him in action ever since I met him, which before, was before he got this job. He did another job that was bigger and, uh, than Blue Lake. And he is, uh, well, you know, we'll see what happens, but to be a person chosen because of a petition To be a person chosen because of a petition and anger is kind of strange.
Thank you. Any other comments? Marty, and then I didn't see your hand up. Winona?
You know, just standing in the back as a potential appointment, appointee, I said to Kat, why are we even here? What was the point? And I, I really do believe that. I don't think that there was any anticipation for anyone to be voted on tonight besides Chris. He walked into the position. I have not seen him at a single event and I feel bad because you're like getting personally attacked right now, but that's how the community feels. And that's why we have seven people running for city council because we're sick of this. And this is a reoccurring thing and it does feel corrupt and it is set up. And the community doesn't stand a chance a lot of the time. When we show up and we speak and we rally. And we research and it doesn't matter how informed we are, we get dismissed. And that's what's happening tonight.
Marty? Marty Granger, well, as much as I like Chris, I feel like he's the least prepared for this position. And it does feel like a slap in the face to those that have lived here their whole life or for decades and. Chris has only lived here for not even a year, nine months. So that's, that's what I feel. Well, I've always said I don't, I don't judge people that lived here for two weeks or two generations. So that, and sixty-three out of about eight hundred registered voters comes to about twelve percent. Anyway, um. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see your hand, John.
I was waiting till everyone else was done. I totally accept you guys' decision. However, I like to say, I really hope Kat is the mayor in twenty twenty-five. I think she'd be a great candidate. Thanks.
Is there any other public comment?
I have one more thing I'd like to add. Um, I noted Tina saying, you know. Chris has the least name recognition and possibly he's the least likely to be elected because of that. But that is probably the worst reason to choose a candidate for appointment because he's probably not going to get elected. My personal opinion. For what it's worth.
You know, we don't know what's gonna happen in this election. It's a presidential election, you know, I'm. I'm not making any predictions tonight. But I will say that we do have a motion on the floor.
I don't want to disparage anybody from coming up in here making comments. I love that you guys are involved and come here and say stuff. But obviously you are not my constituents that have came forward to me and told me what they wanted and how he's involved in the community. That's the reason I made the vote. It's not because you guys told me to come up and not do it. It's because of the. Probably four dozen people that came up and told me to do it. I had nothing to do with these people talking outside of what we're here. Other than the reason why I might, I made my decision is because of my constituents that talked to me. That I said, one-on-one, who would you want to be appointed? And that's the reason behind this. You guys are allowed to have your opinions, but some of the accusations that are going on tonight are ridiculous. It has nothing to do, you're interrupting.
Okay, excuse me, excuse me. We were quiet when you were speaking. Christopher, go ahead.
No, that's enough.
Okay. Um, and I want to make sure that everyone understands that the Brown Act. Prevents any of us council members from talking to one another about issues. You know, two of us can talk, but after that, it's considered a serial meeting and we can't do it. So when we bandy around that word transparency, let me make it clear to you. That no one on this council has been talking in a back room with cigars or something like they used to in the old days. Everything's out in the open. And it has to be, or we would be in big trouble. So I just want to make that absolutely clear, that there's no backroom decisions. You're seeing what you're seeing in real time. This is not pre-recorded. This is live. So that's just my statement at this point. Lori, I think we've heard from you already on this issue or not on this issue. Okay. I'm gonna let you go ahead. Kat, since you've already spoken, I'm not gonna let you speak again, okay? In the interest of moving this along.
Okay, so thank you for this extra opportunity to speak. I don't think I heard anybody say that there was any backroom conversation. If there was another, those words were never said and, and that was your interpretation. It, well, implied or said is, is different. And so, um, because I've often corrected for. Comments inappropriate or appropriate, um, I would just like to call that one out. Because I don't think that anyone is saying out loud, maybe in their mind, but not out loud. That there have been any backroom deals made, conversations. Yes, the Brown Act is very clear as I'm sure. Some people know. Um, you, your, your group definitely knows. Um, so I feel offended that you assume. Yeah, and that's okay. Roll your eyes, you know, catch your breath. I get it because it's not first time. Um, because we are not children, we are not your students or your past students. But I do, I would like to say that, um, the assumption that you think that we've all. Assumed you had background, um, conversations is probably not true. Maybe some. But, um, I, I just don't think that you give the general population of Blue Lake any credit. For being clear thought or wanting a particular choice. Yes, there have been petitions made. Yes, there were sixty-three people who signed the petition for John Swatzky. There are some beautiful letters for Chris. There have been conversations, I'm sure amongst well-meaning people for Kat and for Nona. And, you know, maybe they didn't have petitions come forward, but those petitions, those signatures, those. Requests for, um, appointments should not be discarded because they're in a written form. That, that's what petitions are. The petitions are support for an issue, a person. And those should be, um, valued and counted as, um, something of the wishes. It's twelve percent of the population. Most people don't really care. And if we get twelve percent who vote in the general election, that'd be awesome. Because, you know, people are tired or they don't want to, or they don't care, or they don't think it's important. But this particular group of people are here tonight. Whoever's watching on, on Zoom are here tonight. And so just because, you know, you don't think it matters, isn't true. And, and, and your, your, your non-verbals just shout, Adeline. And I just need to ask you to maybe think about that. Thank you.
Well, I have to admit that we are human beings and we have emotions. Is there any other further comment?
Related to what Chris said, not this whole thing.
No, I think we're gonna have to put an end to this. It's not getting any further. And I really would like to keep it to one. Comment per person. If there's anyone new that would like to make some kind of new comment, we do have a motion and a second.
Can I ask you for some clarifications?
Yeah.
I, um, you mentioned one time that you normally don't make motions or second motions. And, and is there, is there some protocol that has to do with that, that the mayor does or doesn't or anything like that?
No, it's just.
There is another, a council member that has.
No, it's just something that I.
Adeline, but thank you, Chris.
It's just something that I haven't done. Um, I've tried not to in the past, but to move things along. And if I feel strongly enough about something, I would.
I just saw from what you said a long time ago that it was some protocol issue, but.
It's not, it's not in this form of government because the mayor is not voted on separately. You know, Kim Bergell has that problem in Eureka because she can only vote when there's a tie. She's expressed to me how frustrating that can be. And I think Ferndale votes separately for their mayor. Um, and I think Fortuna might too. But when everyone is voted as a city council person, then amongst the four of us or five of us, it should be. We choose a mayor, then the mayor has the ability to make motions, which I try, technically I try not to oftentimes. Uh, but I can. Four seconds. All right, the motion and second is on the floor. For Chris Fire to be appointed to the vacant seat for two years. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm gonna abstain.
It passes three to one. Uh, Clerk Annali Gonzalez, are you ready to? Give the oath of office, Christopher, Chris? You need to come forward? Yeah, this is her first time. Yeah.
I, Chris Carter. Do solemnly swear. That I will support and defend. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies. Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear truth, faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
I will bear truth, faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
I'll take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion. And that I will, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Okay, congratulations. I would just notice when. I noticed we don't have a chair for you. Yeah, well, you're, you're here tonight. You're here. You're here.
Well, one of our council members has already left. Can we motion to adjourn?
No, we're not, maybe.
We're not done?
No, we're not done. We have a lot going on.
He hasn't left. His phone is still here. No, he hasn't. Like, he's stepped outside to talk to his daughter.
All right, welcome to the council. So we'd counsel correspondence. I know, I'm feeling cold too.
Let's shut the reports tonight.
Oh, well, I have one. Okay, uh, we are back after a short recess. And we are next on consent agenda, which we have nothing there. Reports of council and staff. Uh, Christopher, did you have a report to make on any meeting? Which one was that? Oh, the safety. Oh, yeah, the safety. Elise, did you have a report?
The Parks and Rec meeting was also canceled. There was a significant issue at the RCEA meeting. Of, uh, for September, and that was whether or not we would, uh, receive our allotment of power from Diablo Canyon Nuclear Power Plant. There was quite a bit of, uh, public, um, comment and, um, and participation on that topic. And, um, the vote was to not receive it. Um, which is interesting because, um, the. The facts of the issue are that all, um, all PG&E, all, all electric, electricity users in the state of California pay. Into, um, a fund that, um, that funds Diablo Canyon. And, um, and all, um, entities, all load-serving entities have the, um, have an allotment that they can take. It doesn't cost anything. So, because essentially all of our customers are already paying for it. And, um, and so the decision was made not to take, um, this allotment, which, um, is valued at a half a million dollars. Uh, because of the message that may or may not be sent to lawmakers. Um, and the public and our, our customers if we were to receive the nuclear energy. So, or that, it's not even, well. We don't directly receive nuclear energy. It goes into the grid and we get our energy from the grid. Um, so anyway, um, RCEA is projected to have a nine million dollar deficit next year. And this half a million dollars potentially could have alleviated some small amount of that. Um, but we made the decision not to receive that power. So that's the big news from RCEA.
What was the reasoning behind them not taking the power?
It's, um, it's basically a, a political message to say that we are not in support of nuclear power.
But the amount that we were gonna get was five hundred thousand.
It was a half a million dollar, it, it was about, the value of the power would have been a half a million dollars. It would have reduced our deficit by a half a million dollars. Five hundred thousand dollars.
It's not very much.
In the grand scheme of things, it's not a lot of money, but a half a million dollars.
No, to us, it is a lot.
It's not, it's not a huge portion of the power of our, of our overall annual power, um, a lot, you know, need. But, um. But a nine million dollar deficit is nothing to sneeze at either. The, um, the economy of elect, of, you know, of electricity is really bad right now.
The concern I have is that you voted in favor of. The hooking up with the nuclear energy, along with, I think, one other entity. Was that right? It was two to.
I made a suggestion and I made a motion and it was seconded by one of the other board members.
Yeah, but when it came to a vote, it was voted down. Is that how the vote went?
Correct.
Yeah.
And then the second motion was to not, um, accept it in any form. Pardon?
I think it's a bummer that it could, like, your motion didn't get accepted.
Yeah, well, my motion was to accept it and to use that half a million dollars to build, um, local, uh, renewable energy. So that we would be creating some energy in our future with the monies that we would be saving. And the basis of that is that we can't stop the energy from being generated. Diablo Canyon's gonna run whether we take any benefit from it or not. We can take that energy that is our allotment and we can turn that into something that is positive, green and renewable. But. Does that allotment, I'm sorry, does that allotment now go to somebody else? Yeah, basically it just stays in the grid. So who gets the benefit from it? Probably PG&E and Southern California Edison, the big guys.
Okay, um, I attended a Economic Development Commission meeting and I have to tell you. Um, Chris, that I wanted the Matty Act. The Matty Act is something that we have to bring up. And it gives all of us the liaison positions to all the different commissions. And because Elizabeth McKay stepped down and I was the alternate to, um, two of her commission liaisons. I've been going to these meetings for the last three months and. So I'm looking forward to at our next meeting in October at the last regular meeting that we can go through. Um, as per the Matty Act and look at what commissions we'd like to be, um, on. Of course, things will change because there's an election coming up, but at least, um, a little relief from going to all these meetings. Anyway.
Isn't it possible for Chris to kind of informally take over, um, Elizabeth's assignment?
No, it has a meeting though, coming up. Yeah, we have a meeting.
And because you're gonna be at all the meetings pretty much by that time anyway, so at least it would give you something for November. Because there won't be a swearing-in until December anyway, so.
Yeah. Um, anyway, I attended the Economic Development Commission meeting today at four thirty, which made for a tight day. Um, and, um, and it was a good meeting. They're still discussing the cannabis ordinance. Um, that we sort of kicked down to them. They're looking at, uh, weed of all the places where, where they're. uh, weed of all the places where they're, um, where they have a cannabis ordinance and some other cities. Also Eureka, right now, actually this evening was having the discussion about another dispensary that they're putting in to possibly, um, having in their city again. So there's an ad hoc committee meeting, um, commission of, uh, Roxanne Rothry and Darcy Lima that are looking into these, uh, ordinances. They discussed the vacant com- commercial property assessment ordinance idea. And possibly Stardos, the Emporium, um, the glass blowing business are some of the businesses that could be filled. And the idea of having a fine if people don't fill that, fill those businesses. But, um, you know, the, the commission is looking at that, but probably there won't be any fine from what I can see. Business outreach discussion, partnering with the Chamber of Commerce. There was an update on the town square and the Powers Creek District. The Chamber of Commerce made a report. The president was there, Justin. Parks and Rec event schedule was talked about, so it was a good meeting. I'd like to pass it on to someone else. Angela?
Uh, no meetings. We have Chamber, uh, Blue Lake Chamber of Commerce on Monday next week and then REDEC is on the Monday before our regularly scheduled meeting.
Yes, and I have Humboldt Waste Management Authority this Thursday. And then Humboldt County Association of Governments in Eureka the following Thursday. Okay. Manager report next month. I mean, next meeting, next meeting. Okay, we are now on future agenda items. Okay, I mentioned the Mattie Act. For our next meeting.
Anyone else? So the financial audit was, was supposed to be on our last, um, agenda, but it didn't happen?
It'll be this month.
Was there something else that, oh, the, um, the, uh, metal roof ordinance, wasn't that going to come?
That's coming forward as well.
That's all I recall. Was, was there anything else that we know about that's coming up?
Um, you guys will have a closed session for property negotiations. There's, there's quite a list. Oh, there possibly will be a cap presentation by the county. Climate, climate action plan, not cat. Caps, the things you wear.
The alphabet soup, um, government is, yeah, ceded only by education. All right, well, we'll have our agenda meeting right before the meeting, so that'll be good too. Okay, um, we are now on item twelve.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Motion made by Liz Gaffoni, seconded by Christopher Edgar to adjourn. Any further comment from council? Anything from public? Back to council. Oh.
When you said the ball was three to one, it was actually three to zero with one abstention.
Thank you.
So you were incorrect in announcing the vote.
Thank you. It will be reflected in the minutes. Thank you. Back to council for the vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. We're adjourned.